Good evening, everybody. We'd like to call the November 20, 2023 meeting of the Derrick County Board of Education to order. We're meeting in the Derrick County Administration Building in the Manio, and the time is now five o'clock. Before we begin, I'd like to request a moment of silence. Thank you. Any Board of Commissioners here tonight? I don't see any, but we appreciate their support. Now, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Mr. Brower to provide the official welcome on behalf of the Board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the Board, I would like to welcome everybody here today and everyone watching on the live stream. We have some exciting things to be covered in the announcements portion of the agenda, not the least of which is a state championship for our undefeated Nighthawks men's soccer team. Congratulations to Coach Ramirez and his team who delivered an exclamation point to an amazing season. With that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Brower. Next, Ms. Lynn Mindiana Lozano, student advisors of the Board will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn. Our first order of business this evening is approval of the agenda, but before we continue, I'd like to request a motion to amend the agenda to revise the personnel consent agenda as discussed in closed session. Do I hear a motion to amend the agenda?
Make the motion to amend the agenda.
Mr. Brower, thank you. Is there a second? Ms. Mathewell, second it? Is there any discussion? Here or none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of amending the agenda as requested, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been amended. Next, we need to approve the amended agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the amended agenda?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Twitty, thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Wicker, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Here or none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of approving the amended agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the amended agenda has been approved. Next, we'll move to public comment. I'll turn the meeting over to Board Attorney, Ms. Rachel Hitch. Thank you, Ms. Hitch. Next, I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Bassnight for announcements. We'll also hear from our student advisors.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Board members. Several things on the announcements. Someone was looking at my notes evidently and tipped my hand because the first thing I want to talk about tonight is our First Flight Nighthawks men's soccer team, who are now the 3A state champions. First Flight, the First Flight Nighthawks defeated Hickory on Saturday 3-0. And from where I was sitting, the match was never in doubt. They dominated both offensively and defensively on both ends of the pitch. Just so you know, Board members, they posted an undefeated record this year of 22-0-1, scoring 104 goals and allowing six. We're going to try to have them at a future board meeting, hopefully next month if we can get them here. But I did also want to let you know that after leaving the state championship game, I know several of the players ended up going back to Wilson and playing basketball that night, so not sure how they did that, but they did okay. So excited about that. But having said that, I do want to recognize Coach Chad Williams. He's the head men's basketball coach at First Flight High School. And I'm going to ask Coach Williams to come forward to the podium and talk to us a little bit about the Good Guys vs. Cancer men's basketball showcase that will start on Wednesday, December 29th, and go through Saturday, December 2nd. It is in honor of Coach Williams' dad, Mr. Guy Williams, Jr., and the proceeds go to the Coaches vs. Cancer, all games to be played at First Flight High School. Coach, tell us all about it.
Well, thank you for having me, first of all. It's an honor to be here. As Mr. Bassnight said, the event came about, we got invited when my dad was diagnosed. Some friends of mine in the coach community found out and invited us to come to a Coaches vs. Cancer event in Asheville. And in order to go to this tournament, one of the requirements was you had to do your own kind of fundraiser. And so I decided that there was nothing like this going on in eastern North Carolina. So we decided to put on our own showcase as our fundraiser, and that was six years ago. This will be the fifth because COVID got us one year. And it has grown exponentially every year to something that I could not have imagined. And it wouldn't be possible without, you know, the support of Derrick County Schools, first of all. I mean, you know, the use of the facilities, Sheriff's Office, and then our community and our sponsors. This year, we've actually expanded to four days versus three. Started off as two days and three, now we're at four. And a lot of the reason for that is because I want to keep our local teams involved. And the teams that are coming, because we have, we have over 50 Division One players coming in, one of which just signed at Kentucky two days ago. I mean, it's really high-level basketball. But I wanted our local teams to also be involved, and teams that are coming from far distances don't want to just come for one day because we're so outside, you know? So we've moved those, so we got two local games on Wednesday, followed by two national games. Then on Thursday, we have two local games, followed by two national games. And then Friday and Saturday, we have four on Friday, nine on Saturdays, 21 games total. I think it's 34 teams that are coming, 255 hotel rooms. I mean, it's, there's a lot that goes into this. And, you know, the community has really just picked up and supported this for us. Last year, we were able to donate $17,000, six of which went to one of our students at First Flight High School, who was undergoing treatment, and then the remainder went to the American Cancer Society. Unbeknownst to me, we were the leading fundraising team in the country for Coaches vs. Cancer. They contacted me to tell me. I had no idea. And so they've come on board this year and are going to be more involved as we go. And our goal this year is $25,000. Eighty percent of our VIP ticket sales, which are online now for sale, are going directly to John Buford, who is First Flight Middle School and First Flight High School teacher, a fantastic member of our community. Our shirts are orange this year in honor of the cancer that he's battling, and it's something that I'm very proud to be a part of.
Any questions, Board members?
How much did you raise your first year, Coach?
Our first year, I think we did about $4,200.
And you're looking at 25 grand.
25 grand, and our expenses have gone through the roof. You know, we have some fantastic sponsors, the Outer Banks Visitors Bureau, Admiral Landscapes is our title sponsor. The Visitors Bureau came on board with us two years ago, and that's really helped us take off. We've partnered with the Hoop State Network and Phenom Hoops, and so our social branding is really taking off as well. And it's just, it's something I'm really, I'm very proud of the people who've helped me get it there because it's not about me. And it's never about me. It's about, you know, I said the other day that the teams that are coming in makes it seem like we're really focused on basketball, but focusing on the bigger thing is why we started this and for my dad, and so.
Couple of things I'd like to say is I've been to the last three, I think, and I love the fact that the community turns out for this almost sold out every night, correct?
Yes, sir.
And the First Flight kids, they've got several of their teams that they love, and they'll pack the student section and root for those teams, which is amazing. They're going to root for teams that they see once a year, and they go all out. It's a lot of fun to watch their students.
It is, and that's what I tell the teams that are, we've never had a team that said they didn't want to come back. And now we've already got teams booking for next year that are calling me, that are high-level teams as well. But there are certain players and styles of play that our kids really love. And to watch the kids then come and interact with our kids in the stands is really neat. And it's a unique situation because we're so far removed from where these teams are coming from. Their fans aren't coming, their parents aren't coming, so the crowd is full of Derrick County people. And so they're just there to watch good basketball, and they're for a good cause, and they end up falling in love with these kids and watching these teams play. And so they're rooting for good basketball, not just necessarily who's on the floor. So I think that's what makes it a little unique, but again, it's going to be a really fun thing. So if you guys don't have any plans, come on out.
Congratulations on the award from the Cancer Society.
Thank you.
Phenomenal job on putting this together, Chad.
Thank you very much.
This is really high-quality basketball, and so if you love good basketball, there's a few days that you can go sit down and just watch some really good teams and then...
Friday night, we've got the defending 4A state champion, who's ranked eighth in the country, playing the John Marshall out of Richmond, who was ranked number one in the country for most of the year. They're ranked fifth in the country this year, so when I say it's highly, literally, it's number five versus number eight in public school in the country. And then we've got private schools that are coming in that are very high-ranked as well, so.
Probably get a lot of college scouts there.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Fifty, I'm sorry, 50 D1 players coming?
Over 50, yes, sir.
That's crazy.
Crazy.
That's crazy.
Chad, as a superintendent, I want to thank you for everything you do and the light that you shine on Derrick County schools. But as a daddy and a former coach and someone who you work with, my son, I want to thank you for what you do for our kids.
Thank you.
Because that's even more important.
Thank you.
So thank you very much. And we'll see you at the basketball tournament.
Can we get a photo?
Absolutely.
I would be remiss if I didn't say a shout-out to my First Flight Nighthawk soccer team as well. So Coach Ramirez, and we did have kids that played all 80 minutes of the soccer game and then got on their parents' car and met us in Wilson and played in Wilson Saturday night. One kid played about 25 minutes, had 11 points, so anyway, good kids.
Thank you all very, I neglected to thank Chad's wife and son for coming with him, but we'll acknowledge that they came and appreciate that very much. Next, I'd like to ask Dr. Castillo, if you'll come to the podium, please. We are very excited that our Director of Administrative Services and Career and Technical Education, Dr. Shannon Castillo, which also school safety falls under all of her other titles and hats, has been named to the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, Center for Safer Schools, School Safety Advisory Council. And her first meeting is...
The week after we get back from Thanksgiving.
So we're really happy that they've reached out. This is a new addition. They're going to actually have regional representatives for safe schools. And they reached out to Dr. Castillo and asked her to sit on the advisory. So we're thrilled to have representation on that committee.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am. Katie, will you come up just a second? Thanks. Derrick County Schools recently received an audit of our federal elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds, or ESER funds. I would like anybody and everybody that was involved in that to come forward, please, because I know assisting in that audit were Director of Elementary Instruction and Federal Programs, Katie Spruill, Interim Finance Director, Emily Santora, Technology Director, Holly King, Director of Administrative Services and Career and Technical Education, Dr. Shannon Castillo, Director of Exceptional Children's Services, Dr. Rita Roberts, Director of Human Resources, Oliver Holly, Director of School Nutrition, Kalida Govan, and Cape Hatters Elementary School Principal, Rachel Benton, and NAGS Head Elementary School Principal, Kelly Flora. Derrick County Schools met all programming requirements for the use of federal funds with no findings and no recommendations. And let me tell you, they worked long hours, well into the night, to get this audit preparation done, to present to our auditors. And to say the majority of them were not here when those funds were allocated, so they not only had to do the homework of where the money was intended, but they had to follow the trail to see where the money went. And Steve and I were actually on the way back in the car on a Zoom meeting with them during the audit. And it was, to say it was professional would be an understatement. You would have thought that they went through this step-by-step the entire way. So we were very impressed and very pleased with the outcome and want to recognize y'all and thank you for your hard work.
It was because of the team.
Update for the Board. Derrick County Schools received our first air quality testing since the Board contracted with LRC Indoor Testing and Research last week. LRC found no areas of concern in any of our schools, the administrative offices, and/or the maintenance and bus garages. We will begin adding the new air quality data to our website as soon as that data is finalized, so anybody can go there and pull that up. So that went really well. Power School. Not trying to scare anybody. Let me start with that. Just wanted the Board to know that the NCDPI has signed a contract with Infinite Campus, which will replace Power School as a student information system. And the transition that was announced will be a two-year transition. For those of you that don't know, Power School houses student academic data, demographic data, grades, attendance, and other integrated processes used by Power School in Derrick County Schools are student enrollment and returning student verification, e-collect for attendance transportation, automation of new student accounts, blackboard, educator's handbook, elevation, peach jar, and Tims. NCDPI platforms housed in Power School are also Amplify, Canvas, and SchoolNet. Now, I say that to you, but I will end with this. There are a significant number of questions that are flying about this transition from Power School. A lot of those questions right now do not appear to have answers readily available. So we will continue to push that. Holly, if you want to jump in anywhere in here, we'll continue to push those questions to try to get answers to our, to any of our concerns and in the transition. Does that pretty much cover everything? Okay, and Holly is keeping up to date on that as well. Mr. Chairman, I think that's all of our announcements.
Student advisors?
Student advisors?
I have announcements.
Wonderful. Do I have that on the agenda? Denise, oh, wonderful, thank you.
Kitty Hawk Elementary, Kitty Hawk Elementary School Kindergarteners held an alphabet fashion show, dressed up to represent words beginning with each letter of both English and Spanish alphabets. Parents were invited to watch the show as their children walked the red carpet. Staff, students, and parents were invited to contribute photos and information to our Wall of Honor to recognize veterans in our staff and Kitty Hawk Elementary School community. Our Fall Carnival was a huge success thanks to our PTO and staff members volunteering at this traditional annual event. The First Flight Elementary School K-4th grade DLI team collaborated to create the first First Flight Elementary School Heritage Festival. For this festival, students in each DLI classroom researched one country from South America and one country from Central America. The students participating in project-based learning as they created presentations to share the cultures, traditions, sports, food, clothing, music, flags, and customs of the people in various countries. The DLI team invited all students K-5 and families to come and listen to the students' presentations. This was an awesome celebration of project-based learning, collaboration among students, and appreciation for other countries and cultures around the world. Click here to see pictures of the event. First Flight Middle School, our librarian and career development coordinator collaborated to plan an engaging event to celebrate local veterans. All 210 sixth graders came to the library throughout the day to hear firsthand stories from different local veterans. Following the Q and A, students wrote letters to send away to those who are currently serving. It was an absolutely amazing day. The men's soccer team traveled to Greensboro for the 3A state championship. The final score was 3-0. Congratulations. Our theater department, aka stagecraft, just completed three successful showings of She Kills Monsters, which is also a play that is being done in schools across the country. Finally, the annual Good Guys vs. Cancer basketball tournament will start this week. It now features men's and women's teams from across the country that has grown to be nationally recognized for the teams that play. Along with the amount of money that is raised, 80% of the funds raised this year will go to Mr. Buford, while a majority of the last years went to Gwen Bosson and her fight.
Good evening. I'm going to start off with NAGS Head Elementary Schools updates. We had a blast celebrating our first end-of-the-nine-week celebration on Friday, November 3rd. Students met our PBIS challenge and were treated to a mini Field Day event at Doughty Park with a bounce house and ice cream. We will be celebrating our positive behaviors at the end of every nine weeks with a different celebration. Next up, there will be a glow dance. The information is not complete on this yet, but stay tuned for that. We are also planning our December STEAM school-wide challenge. Each grade level will be challenged to invent a toy with a variety of materials. These toys will be on display for parents and guests the week before break. Stop in, and you'll definitely want to see those. Next up is Manuel Elementary School. Title I Family Literacy Night brought in 83 parents, and we have 18 avid MHS students supporting this event. Grades K, 4, and 5 visited the wall that heals. Our DLI committee is planning a social studies engagement night called a Bilingual Holiday Journey through the Americas happening December 8th at MES. For the first time, we are having our winter concert at the Manio Movie Theater downtown on December 11th, and we are looking forward to Winter Wonderland on December 2nd, directly after the parade. In Manio Middle School, the Spooktacular Concert was a great success with a packed house. Our band and chorus will be performing for MES on November 15th, and our book fair will be starting next week. We just had our first MMS Bingo Night for Families. And finally, happening at the high school, the Women's Cross Country Team were runner-ups at the 2A state competition. This year, our students will be putting on a totally written, directed, and acted performance in December. The school has a women's wrestling team for the first time. Our school also now has a National Art Honor Society. And lastly, avid 11 students presented the NERESA conference earlier this month. Lots of good things happening. Thank you, guys.
Cape Hatters Elementary School had their first SURF and Habit of Mind Assembly on November 9th. We recognize students who excelled at the S in SURF, which stands for Showing Responsibility, and our first two habits of mind, which are applying past knowledge to new situations and thinking and communicating with clarity and precision. The habits of mind directly correlate with the NC's new portrait of a graduate. There is a growing recognition that mastering subject area knowledge alone will not be sufficient to prepare our children for their futures. They will need to deliberate, practice, and focus attention to grow their capacity as critical thinkers and problem solvers to navigate and thrive in the face of unprecedented change. We also hosted a Veterans Day and Thanksgiving concert featuring our 2nd and 4th graders on November 16th. Cape Hatters Secondary School hosted annual Veterans Day Celebration, hosting 55 veterans and their family members. Breakfast was prepared by Mr. Randy Ratliff's Foods classes. The CHSS band welcomed all the veterans into the gymnasium and played a variety of patriot music. All veterans in attendance were recognized with the recognition of combat veterans, as well as CHSS graduates who are currently serving in the armed forces. Mr. Jeff Cruden, Derrick County District Attorney and U.S. Navy veteran, addressed the veterans and student treating our crowd to a thought-provoking and moving speech. Finally, 14 Hatters Island veterans were remembered in a roll-call ceremony and were memorialized by taps played by two students, Senior Abby O'Neill and Junior Kate Parker. memorialized by taps played by two students, Senior Abby O'Neill and Junior Kate Parker. At the Derrick County Learning Academy, through a grant from the Shoes That Fit Program at Rackroom Shoes, we were able to provide 19 pairs of new shoes to students in need. Thank you.
Thank you. Bobby?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, one more thing I wanted to say. I wanted to thank all of our principals and teachers that took their students to the Wall That Heals. To say it was moving doesn't even come close. I know I went several times, and each time it was like being in a different place. I want to thank everybody that was involved, and I especially want to thank all those that worked so hard to bring that here to Derrick County for our citizens, but most for our students. It was tremendous and extremely grateful. Thank you.
And I'm going to piggyback on that. At the opening ceremony, I was there, but there were other school districts here also. So a lot of students from Derrick County and outside of Derrick County showed up for that, too. So that was, that was good. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Miss Bowleswell, and a motion seconded by this, Ms. Balance, I'm sorry. Barry was saying something to me. Is there any discussion? Here now, I call for a vote. Those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is reports and items for information. I would like to call Mr. Oliver Holly, Director of Human Resources, forward to provide a report on behalf of the Recruitment and Retention Committee.
Good afternoon. I am missing Ms. King. The clicker. As I'm waiting on this, just want to thank everybody to kind of ditto, and I'll wait till my second presentation, but as everyone has said about the Wall That Heals, it was a beautiful event. Being able to see the veterans that day, and honestly, everybody to come and show out into Derrick County was, thank you, was great to see. I'm here tonight to present on the Recruitment and Retention Committee. As the PowerPoints are coming up, just want to highlight, this was some information that came up as our board, as you were having conversations individually as a group, trying to find ways that we can recruit and retain individuals in Derrick County Schools. This, under the leadership of Superintendent Bass Knight and our Board Chair, Mr., well, just, Mr. Payne, did assign us a committee under our Chairman of the Committee, Mr. Carl Woody. So tonight, we're going to talk about some of that great work we've been doing over the last couple of months, so that you can know what is taking place, and also can see where we're going and moving forward, and continue to provide that feedback. So the addition of this, our mission of this committee is to address and to identify ways and areas of improvement when recruiting and retaining Derrick County employees. One of the things is to create opportunities for, to improve Derrick County's competitiveness when we are recruiting and retaining our staff members. Here you see here are board members that are on this committee. I'm sorry, you have Chairman Woody, you also have Ms. Mary Balance, you have Ms. Susan Bothwell, you have Ms. Erin Gibbs, who is our benefits specialist in HR, you also have Ms. Emily Santora, Rachel Benton, Principal down in Cape Hatteras, John Luciano at Manio High School, Ms. Diane Childress, Jeannie Mauser, Catherine Bowser, Hannah Nash, and myself. One of the things that this group is comprised of is classified and certified employees. We wanted to make sure that everyone from Hatteras had a say-so as well, all the way up to Kitty Hawk. We wanted to make sure that we could get information from each one of these entities. You know that some things work on one side of the counter, it may be more attractive than one side, so they have a different side of information that they could provide. So going back, we've had meeting dates, starting back in August. August the 3rd was our first meeting date, moving down to March 29th, and then we had a May 30th meeting, also October the 12th, and then our more recent meeting was held on November the 2nd. During this process, we sent out a couple of surveys, and I appreciate everyone that responded to those surveys, because it was actually three surveys, and I had some people call, why are you asking me the same questions? Well, they were the same questions, but we asked them in different ways to find, engage different responses. So out of those three surveys, this is what our final survey was. We ended up with 499 respondents to this survey. We had 28.7 classified employees to respond. We also had 68.1 of our certified staff members to respond to the survey. So it was a really good turnout, and to be honest, almost 500 out of a complete staff of almost 800, that is a really good turnout. Each one of you, I believe you may have access, if not, I know the committee members did, in that there was an opportunity for each one of our respondents to leave feedback. There was some really good information on all three of those. But to discuss the questions, these are the questions that we were looking at. We were looking at district-sponsored healthcare, which is SSA account, we were looking at professional development stipends, we were looking at district-sponsored health savings, I'm sorry, that's up there twice, district-paid dental coverage, district-paid vision coverage, interest-free relocation and hardship loans, classroom and instructional supply stipend, class care, or childcare, I'm sorry, classroom instructional supply stipend, I did this twice, I apologize, district-paid home care, healthcare, and the savings accounts with a contribution to our staff, each individual. As you see here, you see a response of how our schools did. This is the 499 respondents. It kind of gives you a breakdown of where our campuses, they did with their response totals. Also, you see, one of the things we wanted to know is childcare. Now, most of us in retirement age, we're maybe not looking at trying to have childcare, we're probably trying to make sure everybody's out the house, but we did find that certain questions gave you a different response based off of, A, your age, and based off of maybe how long you had in education. So one of the things we found important was how many years did you have in education? So that was one of the questions we did as well. Also, looking, as I stated, at your age group, looking between 20 to 30, or if you were over 50. And it was very interesting, when you broke down those questions, which subsets they found more important based off of where you were in your career. One of the things that we looked at, now, there was a lot of information that came out of this, there was a lot of feedback that was provided, but what the committee did, and there was some conversation around, do we look at it in two separate pots? Do we look at it as just recruitment, and do we spawn off and then look at a retention component of it? But one of the things we were looking at, that we thought we could do and implement ourselves as a district, was to look at a local certified and classified longevity supplement plan. Now, just to give you that, an idea of what we're talking about is, to kind of keep you like a bonus of, hey, you've been with us five years, let's reward you with a stipend. That's one of the things that we're investigating. If you've been here 10 years, it may be another, if it's 20 years, it may be another stipend. Also, one of the things that we did identify, and Mr. Bass Knight can chime in as well, because we've had some conversation, is just improving our communication of what we actually do and you have as an employee. One of the things in our leadership meeting, we talked last week with our APs, I posed a question, how much do you pay for your insurance benefits? And I got that answer, and in my next slide, I'll kind of break it down a little bit. But folks knew how much they paid, but a lot of people don't realize how much the district puts in for other benefits on the backside. And so one of the things, working with Ms. Nash over our website, we've gone up there and tried to reconfigure some things, put some items up there where you can see it and understand a lot of what you have as a local and a state benefit. And then also researching a district-paid dental plan coverage. One of the things that the committee is really looking at is those items that we know we can budget for, that don't grow or change on us from year to year, things that we know we can put in place for our employees. And looking at the dental plan, at our survey, 92.8% of our employees that gave responses found that important or very important to them as something we can look at. Now, to break this down, as a part of the educational piece, if you would, we took the base salary for a teacher in North Carolina at $39,000, and I may add that with all of the information that was provided, one thing that was true across the board was that teacher salaries need to be increased across the state. So that's one thing that, a lot of that, but we were looking at what we have control of here in Derrick County Schools. But one of the things we wanted to point out is a typical beginning teacher salary, straight out of college, first year, now no masters, no national board certification, that salary is $39,000. As a district, we pay 25.2% into their retirement system, into their retirement contribution. So for each employee, the district is putting roughly $10,000 of our contribution into their employment. They actually take 6% out of their paycheck, but we, as a district, on the backside, contribute nearly $10,000 based off of that $39,000 salary. Also, as we talked about earlier, yes, I may take the 80-20 plan, and I pay $25 a month, but the district, for each person that signs up on the backside, and this number is going up next month, the district pays $584.96 per employee that adds into our plan. So if you look at it on the big picture, if we pick up another 40 individuals, that now has to be budgeted, that the district has to budget $584 per individual that would join and add to plan. Also, you got the government in here with FICA. You have 7.6% that the district contributes as well to the Medicare and the Social Security. That's another $2,983.50 per employee based off of $39,000. So if you look at it, staff wants to see a bigger paycheck, but just educating our employees that, hey, on the whole, the district is contributing to that first-year teacher another $18,661 to their benefit. Now, we have some veteran teachers. So we took the top salary off of 25-year of the state scale, no masters, no contribution for national board, and ran the same figures. And I'm not going to insult your intelligence, but the base number for that individual is a total of $23,919.95 that each employee gets on the backside. So you think about it, if we ran numbers, and I don't have the numbers, but we could, and see how many of those individuals, we have 25 years or plus, you multiply that times 23,000 plus an employee, anybody that does business, budgeting, you know that the biggest bulk of your budget is in what? Employees and benefits. And this is why, each employee, we're contributing $23,919.95 if they have 25 years of experience. So what are our next steps? The committee has a lot of work to do. We have a lot of work to do, because there's things that we're going to look at from our standpoint, that we can control, and when I say "we" as a district, but there's some greater conversation that we need to have with our superintendent and our assistant superintendent and our current board members, because we're going to have to have some conversation around planning and budget, and look at some of the other items that we may be able to, may be able to provide. In that conversation, and committee members feel free to jump in, there were other ideas of trying to find ways to support people moving here, trying to find ways that we can link them with other benefits throughout the county, trying to find ways that we could possibly provide educational bonuses. But all of that are things that we're going to have to work, that's going to be budgeted in the big picture as you move forth as a district. So as I stated, next steps is getting with our superintendents and our committee members to set up with our local and our state officials to be able to push our objectives moving forward, so that we can continue to help our employees here at Derrick County Schools. That's my last slide. Any questions? And before that, as I said, board members that are in here, please, Chairman, chime in, anything else that you want to share on this evening about that work.
I appreciate all the hard work that you did putting all that stuff together and so forth, but there's one thing that came up in one of our meetings about where we're at on teacher supplements. We're ranked 30th in the state on teacher supplement, but we're ranked fourth.
Fourth in the cost of living.
In the cost of living.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, one thing I would like to see is that 30 to be higher or lower, just to, to help our teachers out, I mean, teachers and staff.
We've had several people that did provide that information, and some of them, thank you, because the committee did look at every one of those comments. Some of them sent us schedules and supplement schedules from other counties for us to compare, and that's where the big picture is, the whole committee has said, those are areas that we need to improve on, but that's going to be a collective effort with the school board and the county commissioners, as you start doing that work and looking at budgeting. Because here's the thing, we would love to do everything we can to support and recruit our teachers, but at the end of the day, it costs money. And those are the conversations that this elected board is going to have to work with our local and state officials to do whatever we can, because we are all fighting, we're all trying to recruit and keep everyone here at the beach, because we want the best for our students, and so we have to be competitive. And so it's some bigger picture things that have to work, but we're committed to work through it, but definitely, I know that that committee is definitely interested in whatever we can do to help our staff. And it's just not teachers, it is staff.
Yeah, to add to that, we have looked, we are also looking at ways for all staff. But I have to say, for the years that I've been on this board, this is probably one of my favorite committees. It has, I didn't, I wasn't sure it was going to turn into what it has been able to turn into, and the people that are at the table are really bringing some great dialogue and looking at some really out-of-the-box ways that we can do this. And in doing that, we realized there was a lot of things that we were already providing, that we were in a pretty good shape, but we're at a point where we kind of have to shift and go in a little bit of a different direction. But I'm really excited and encouraged about what we can do moving forward. I think we're at a place where we can do some really good innovative things, but we may find some things that we just can't do, but at least we looked into it, and we checked the boxes and made sure. So that commitment to our staff is strong, and we're excited. I'm excited to see what we can do, and I hope we can do all the things. I know we can't, but I think there's some, something to be said for going to the state level, too. I really do. Because, you know, when you look at where North Carolina is as a whole, we're very fortunate, because we do have the support that our commissioners, I don't think people realize what would happen to Derrick County Schools if our commissioners did not support us. Like, we would lose positions. We would, it would not be pretty. So, but anyway, yes, I'm super excited. This is a really, this has been an awesome committee, it's been so much fun. So, yeah, I'm looking forward to the next committee.
I commend you, and I'm not going to keep talking, because I'm going to get out of the way, but Superintendent Bass Knight and Blackstock, we say this all the time, we worked in different places, and this school board and our county commissioners have done some great work to be able to sustain a lot of the resources that we need, that, A, help our students. And so that's a collective effort, so it does not happen everywhere.
Oliver, I want to say thank you for the committee coming together and working so hard and bringing this back. Some of you may remember, may not know at all, but I think the reason why your percentage is so high in the dental is that this school district was able to do that until 2010. And with the budget strengths back then, for what reasons they were, they had to stop that, and then we made another change in 2013.
Right.
So that's one of the reasons why you see that dental number so high.
Yes, sir. That was very evident, and just walking around the county, people were dropping that, hey, can you look back into it? And that's what we're doing, looking into it.
Any other comments? Ms. Holly, thank you, and the board members, thank you, that's a lot of work.
Thank you.
Looking forward to see what the final results are going to be.
Thank you to those committee members, and look forward to moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Holly, and your committee.
Next, I'd like to provide a brief report on behalf of the board in regards to our attendance at the North Carolina School Boards Association Annual Fall Conference last week. Five board members, Mr. Bass Knight, Mr. Blackstock are with us, two board members couldn't be with us due to work and family commitments. What a great time at the, at the conference. Great network and opportunity, find out what other school boards are doing, great conversation, many breakout sessions, and the topics range from electric buses, Mr. Blackstock, to artificial intelligence, to teacher pay, to you name it. Great opportunity to hear a lot of great information from some phenomenal speakers, including one of our own, Ms. Balance, on how to be an effective board member, which about 20 folks in attendance, which was good. That was about the right number for, for most of our breakout sessions, but just a good time for the board to learn, network, see what other folks are doing, and learn a lot. It was a good, it was a good time. I want to open up to any other board members, if they have any comments.
It's always great to go to that, just to have an opportunity to network with other board members and see what is going on with other, in other districts, and ways that maybe they're doing something that we can tweak on our end and work with us. So when you have an opportunity to network with people that are doing the same thing in a different, a different place and different parameters, it's always interesting. Actually, not to jump ahead, I won't say, but one thing that we're getting ready to talk about, that Oliver's going to talk about again, I met somebody who to talk about that Oliver's going to talk about again, I met somebody who it in a, that is doing that in their district, and it's really powerful, and he spoke very, very highly of it, so little, you know, carrot in front of you, so you have to pay attention. Now you got to pay attention to the rest of the meeting.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is un- I'm sorry, yes, go ahead.
Um, Mary Ellen, her breakout session was really, really great, spectacular, but she was also the first Dare County Board of Education member to to do a breakout session, so that was pretty cool.
Well, and Steve helped me a lot with that whole. He's got some little slideshow tricks that are pretty impressive.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business, and I'll turn the meeting over to Board Attorney Rachel Hitch for presenting the second reading of proposed policy manual updates.
Yes, and thi- this is the second reading, so you all have had these policies for first reading, and they are generally to keep up with School Board Association proposed updates. What happens is you guys subscribe to that service, and they usually come to us, and we take a look at them and see if they are going to work for you guys and make some suggestions. So these are our suggestions to the amendments.
Rachel, is this one our, is there something, like, are we in violation of anything if we don't pass this tonight?
Which one?
The-
Thirteen-ten.
Thirteen-ten.
Four thousand.
Four thousand-two. They're both thirteen-ten, four thousand-two.
So you need to adopt something by December. So if you didn't want to pass it tonight and you want to do some more investigation on it, you would be fine.
By, by the end of December?
End of December.
Right, so that you-
So we could, okay.
Be up to date for policies in January.
There's a couple of things in here, and reading back through some stuff that I wanted, was just looking at, and um one question I have is, in several of the paragraphs, it says, no, no school system policy or procedure. Have we made sure that none of this crosses any poli- any policy? Because I've read that in a couple of different paragraphs.
That it's not, it doesn't-
That it's not, it's not violating any of our current policies.
Right, so when we, when we looked at it, we look at your other existing policies to make sure they're not in contradiction.
There's also one um other spot that it says, it's in, there's actually quite a few. Can I, can we just, I I would just ask that we wait until December to pass this one. There, there's a few things that I think need a little bit deeper, like there's one section in here that it states um the community services available, that a variety of community services are available to provide parents and families of students with the needed information, and then to insert a link, but there's no link inserted, and I I hesitate to put something in our policy that is dependent on what the community as a whole or that we're referencing or directing somebody to something that we don't control. So that's like one of the things that I think maybe should not be.
Uh under Parents' Parents' Bill of Rights, we have to provide that, so we'll be compiling that um list of community services, and those will be posted on our website. I think from what I've understood so far, that adheres to the 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 uh requirement of the law.
Okay.
That we be able to provide those kind of things. And also, uh the Parents' Guide um to their students' education, which is still under, the template is still in our construction, which will house a lot of this information as well. Um, those things are still evolving uh based on the requirement of the law and the the time period that we have to compile all that data.
Okay. There's another section. Sorry. Um, it's seventeen of, it's on, it's number seventeen of, this is where it was kind of confusing where I was getting.
The Resources for Information on Importance of Student Health.
Hmm, it's actually under the Parent Communication Section Two, I guess it's two, oh no, I'm sorry, Parental Notification Three.
Let me try to get there.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
This, this one is kind of confusing to me.
What Roman numeral are you on? Three?
Three, parent parental notification, Title One notifications, and then it's B, Parent Guide, C, wait, am I even there? Okay, keep going.
Okay.
After C, go to s- twenty-six, in that section, I think? Yep. It says, it just says, their right to take four hours of unpaid leave for, from their jobs every year in order to volunteer in their child's class, as stated in G S, yada, yada. So I couldn't figure out what the beginning part of that was or get to it, so, and I'm, if this is about parent notification, this sounds like a teacher right or an employee right.
It would be, but we are required to notify parents as employees that they have the right to take the four hours.
Providing resources, yeah.
Yes.
So this is saying that parents have a right by law to tell their boss.
To tell their boss, I need the four hours, yes.
And we by law have to pass this policy?
And we're obliged to let them know that.
I feel like-
Because I believe it used to be eight e- eight hours, correct?
Yes, and this is, it's, it's been amended a little bit, but the parental involvement policy that the state already had required us to to let parents know anyway. So, so that's, that's not anything that's new as far as the fact that parents have to be informed or that they can take time off to be involved in their child's education. That, that's not new, but it's now among these things that we have to make sure that we provide as part of a notice.
And I think the confusing part of that is, it's, it's advising our employees as parents of a child that they have the right to do that.
Right. Can we clarify that in our policy to make it more clear?
Sure.
I know it's, I know it sounds fu- silly, but to somebody, to a parent who doesn't, I mean, I'm, I've been on the board for seven years, and I was having trouble filing some of this stuff, and I'm a policy freak. So, so I just, I I think I would like, I would make a motion that we hold off until next month to pass this.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with you, Mary Ellen.
There's a lot to it, so if you guys want another opportunity to take a look at it, it's one of the reasons we tried to push them, well, that and that it, we originally had an earlier timeline, but since we've gotten a little bit more time, I think you all can spend as much time as you want, as long as you have something in place by January first. So if you want to take another month, then shoot me any questions.
Okay.
Or, you know, however you guys want to handle it, if you guys have questions or things that you want clarified, I'm happy to handle that, whatever you need.
Thank you.
Sure.
So I have a motion to wait until December to revisit this policy.
And I think the way that would work is that you just, you wouldn't really even need a motion, you just don't, just don't make a motion to prove it.
Perfect. Everybody, no motions.
Any other discussion on that?
Uh, i- if there are board members that have any other concerns, um pu- please don't hesitate to share those. We, we're happy to try to provide answers um so that you don't have to go try to search for them.
And it's confusing, everyone's trying to work their way through what this is all going to look like in practice, so, you know, I'm here for whatever you need. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Hitch. Next, we'll move to new business. I'd like to call Mr. Denise Fallon and Ms. Kaitlyn Spruill forward to pre- present revised school improvement plans.
Mr. Chairman, while they're coming forward, just to give you a little background before they start their presentation, um a- as you remember, uh we have four areas of focus in Dare County Schools. Those are increasing student learning, recruitment and and retention of high-quality staff, school security, and quality professional development. Um, we asked each of our um schools, when they started developing their school improvement plans, to look at our four areas of focus and tie at least one of their goals to one of our four areas of focus. Um, when these plans came in, we sat down and went through them uh individually by school and and looked at what the the schools had identified as their areas that they wanted to concentrate on, and I wanted to bring this to the board's attention because we had six areas um that pretty much crossed every school improvement plan that I wanted to to bring to your attention. Those areas are effective classroom management, standards-aligned units of instruction, uh tiered instructional system, MTSS, student management of emotions, regular parent communication, and school regularly looks at school performance data. And by and large, in all eleven of our school improvement plans, those areas came out in each, each one of them. Um, and so we took that information and turned around and said, there's our professional development. If that's what our schools need across the board, K-12, top to bottom, those are the areas that we're going to focus on providing that professional development. Ladies?
So I'll just add to that, I think at both the elementary and the secondary level, um as the principals uh work with their staffs, uh with that staff development money that's been allotted to them, uh we've been facilitating conversations about, you know, how do you uh kind of reflect on your school improvement plan to make those decisions about what your staff needs for professional development? And um I know that our principals are working hard to do that and being really purposeful uh with what um staff development and professional uh opportunities they provide uh for their teachers. And so um I will say also, to follow up with uh what Mr. Bassnight talked about with um, so I work with our uh MTSS uh groups in the district, that's that multi-tiered system of supports, which really looks at those screeners that we provide for students and reflecting on data and check-in data, and, you know, what actions do we take as far as interventions with students? And we've spent the year um to date, uh since the beginning of last summer, talking about core instruction. We talk about it at every principal's meeting, we talk about it at every interventionist meeting, and I think also, uh as Mr. Bassnight stated, uh you'll see that as a common thread, uh that they're really thinking about instruction and um what what goes on in the classrooms, and then, of course, that other piece to that is the culture of your school. So, you know, we do great things in the classroom, how do we make sure that parents uh are informed and involved um at the level that we want them to? And I just want to say, I think that's not because of Parents' Bill of Rights. I think it's because it's the right thing to do, and again, it's a, it's a reflection of us really examining our core instruction across the district.
Yeah, and just to piggyback off of what Denise and Mr. Bassnight said, um I think it's one thing that we have really challenged our school um sit, their school improvement teams to do is not just create a school improvement plan and sit it on a shelf, um to constantly reevaluate, look at, okay, what are the things we need to tweak, um what are the things that we're doing that could fall under this, that could um use that to support and really be intentional about what we're doing, um and not just saying we're doing it and then not following up and evaluating the effectiveness of it and determining if we need to do something different, and you don't want it to be a, you know, a, a postmortem, right? You want to be able to go as, along as you go, and it be something that you're constantly looking at and figuring out, okay, what can we do better? Okay, we had this event, what could we make it, how can we make it better next time? Um, and looking at all the pizzas and parts, and um I think our schools do a really great job, and like Mr. Bassnight said, that we have the consistent um threads of, across all of our school improvement plans, and figuring out as a district leadership team, and that's one thing we're doing um at the district level, is providing feedback to our schools on their school improvement plans, to really make sure that we are harnessing, you know, making sure that we're giving them the feedback, that we expect them to give their teachers um and their evaluations, and then also figuring out, using that data to say, okay, what do we need to do to provide the professional learning for our administration, administrative teams at the school levels?
And so I think both, we spend our time uh coaching our principals uh on uh, you know, how to be reflective and how to communicate with your staff and really work through some of those challenges that they have. And um our principals are doing a phenomenal job.
That's right. So. They have a hard job, so we're here, we're here to support them and make sure they have what they need to be successful, so.
Are there any questions in particular about any of the school improvement plans? Yep.
Explain for folks that don't know who is on the school improvement team, because I think that's important.
So school improvement teams, number one, are mandated by the state, um and they sort of outline what that uh group should look like. So it should be uh staff from your building, uh which includes your classified, your certified, uh everybody in your building. Um, parents have to be on your school improvement team. Uh, we would hope at the secondary level that they would include students as well uh on that team, of, and of course, your leadership in your building, um to devise, to, again, look at that data, to be reflective, uh really link it to our district goals, and so they, they heard that, and they, they made it real for their school, and then they devised their plan. Um, they write it together as a team, it's not something the principal does and says, here, this is what we're going to do. And um this year, we had training with Indistar, uh which, how would you just-
So that is what, that is the um platform that they did their school improvement plans in, so they have the indicators that they, um so if you look on any of the school improvement plans, you'll see indicator, what is the initial assessment, how are you going to monitor it, and then what are your, what is it going to look like when it's met? And so for some of these things, it's not going to be met this year, but you expect to see some growth towards it, right? And so you don't expect them to have one hundred percent at the end of the year, that would not be a doable goal. Um, and then I think the other important piece is that each member that is on the school improvement team is voted in. Um, and so the staff gets in um input on who is on the team, um and then that, that's who they're trusting to really lead their school, right? So, and the school improvement chair, too.
Yeah, and after they develop the plan, of course, they take it back to the staff for a vote.
Yeah.
Uh, and so, again, parents are included, students, sta- all staff, leadership.
And that's one thing we've really en- um encouraged our principals to lean into, is not have it be just your school improvement team that is in charge of this, and it doesn't have to be just the principal. So the principal, you shouldn't see the principal's name on every action item, really making that shared leadership, and make sure that everybody has that buy-in from um for the school improvement plan, because no, no five people can make a school effective, right? It's a team, so.
Any other questions?
Lot of work goes into that.
Oh, yeah. Our, our, like, I'm telling you, our schools are rocking and rolling, and I really, I give them huge kudos because it's not an easy task, so, um, and they, they're, and the thing is, is like, this is just a formality, but they do the hard work every day, right? You know, it's just figuring out, you know, what are the focus points that we need to focus on overall, so.
And I think the school improvement plan is that roadmap.
That's right.
Know where we're, know where we want to go, how we're going to get there, and we've been purposeful with that plan.
Correct.
Any comments, questions?
Thanks.
Ms. Fallon, Ms. Spruill, thank you.
I'll make a motion, we approve it, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Twitty, thank you for your motion to approve the school improvement plans and confidential school safety components as presented. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Twitty, second. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Next, we'll hear from Mr. Bassnight in regards to a request to approve North Carolina Association of School Administrators as qualified source for conflict of interest training.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. Uh pursuant to General Statute one fifteen C dash three-three-five dot one-five, the twenty-twenty-three state budget, which became effective October third, includes a new requirement in Section seven point four-one, that all public school employees involved in making or administering contracts receive a minimum of two hours of conflict of interest training. For school employees with contracting authority as of October third, two thousand and twenty-three, the budget requires initial conflict of interest training within six months of the budget's effective date, which is April third, two thousand and twenty-four. And again, in every odd number year thereafter. The budget also requires employees who assume contracting authority after October third to receive initial training within ninety days, and again, in every odd number school, every odd number year. The law specifies this training must include position-specific education on conflicts of interest and ethical standards of conduct in order to help applicable North Carolina ASA members comply with these new requirements. NCASA is currently developing a free two-hour training video featuring an overview of current conflict of interest laws, as well as job-specific examples and tips presented by fellow school administrators. NCASA expects to release that video and process for certification by the end of this month, November. Uh, what I'm asking you today is to, taking account, NCASA's proven track record of providing high-quality professional development for public school administrators throughout North Carolina, and their compl- comprehensive ethical training for administrators prepared in response to the new conflict of interest training requirements, I would ask you to make a motion and approve NCASA as a qualified source for that training so that we could provide that video to our staff as soon as that product has been produced, and they're, they're almost done with it now.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that a motion.
A motion by Mr. Twitty that we approve the North Carolina Association of School Administrators as a qualified source for conflicts of interest training pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one fifteen C dash three-three-five dot one fifteen as requested. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Bauer, Brower, excuse me, any discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes, thank you.
Thank you, board.
Mr. Bassnight. Next item on the agenda is request to submit an application for the North Carolina Purple Star Award. Turn the meeting over to Director of Human Resources, Mr. Oliver Haly.
Well, seeing that Board Member Ballance gave that teaser, I hope I live up to the hype, uh, coming up on the second one. There we go. So on this evening, uh, we've got some great information, uh, and I hope to give you a, uh, overview of what we're talking about with the Purple Star Award. Talking about with this program is, North Carolina is home to the largest population of active-duty military families and, uh, Reserve Guard, active-duty and veterans in armed services in our state. And if you look at it, it is one of our biggest employers in the state of North Carolina. In researching this, with the work of Ms. Katie Spruill and Director, uh, King, we found out and learned that here in Dare County schools, we have 418 military-connected students and 280 military-connected families. That means that someone within their household is connected to the military in some shape or fashion. One of the other things that I did learn is, North Carolina has 14 military locations. Out of that, there are eight bases in our state. Hope I don't have any Navy men and women in here, but North Carolina does not have a Navy base. And I guess that's probably because of our proximity to Virginia, they have the largest naval, and if you look at it, we have three within an hour, with Oceana, uh, Norfolk Naval Station, Newport News, and our Norfolk Navy Shipyard. And so a lot of our families in our area do travel and work with those bases. So point being with that, around our state looking, a couple of our neighbors have jumped on this. Our charter school located in Passantane County, they are recognized as a Purple Star school. Uh, also, Currituck County Schools has five schools in their school districts that are identified as a Purple Star school. And you see Wayne County, uh, obviously with a military base in Wayne County, a lot more of their schools and going on down. The reason I gave you this, you look at Wayne with 31 schools, but then you see Lexington City with one. This is a school-by-school award, so it doesn't matter if you're right on top of a base, you can have one school in Dare County, or you can have all of Dare County servicing. And so with steps, we were coming to you tonight, and I'll be honest, working with a couple of districts the last couple of weeks, I got a little bit of intel that because a couple of these are items that are traditionally done over the summer or in the beginning of the school year, and when you start talking about the transitions that are coming up, we need to work with our schools to be able to insert a component to make sure we're doing the military families in those. I was advised that we could still submit an application for this February, but however, because the training has to be done during the summertime, and this was before we started talking about it, I'm coming to the board tonight to see if you would give us the authority to start now and bring you a plan, so in March, you have it laid out, so when we do the transitions to the next school year, that can be our starting point in implementation, and we can have the training over the summer into the beginning of the year, so we have everything checked off, so that next year, we have all of it done when we go into our application of February. So my request is to approve it from you, uh, the board and the superintendent to move forward. This is not an Oliver Haly project, as you see, it's going to be pulling a committee together. So I would like to create a planning committee and a meeting schedule moving into the next year. Present a plan to the Board of Education here in Dare County schools for March of 2024, so that you can see where we are moving into that next program year. This will allow us, as I said, to catch those transitions at the end of the year, and that can start our project. And also, implementation of services events that we would start in April, and then submit the application as the new application deadline comes together for February of 2025. It seems like it's a long way away, but it's not. Being able to get the ground running is where we're looking tonight. So I come before you to ask for your, uh, approval to go ahead and start with this committee, meeting with our principals, so the work that they are already doing, um, and we did share with them, because the committee was very adamant, they didn't want none of this to be presented tonight without our principals understanding, and realistically, a lot of the conversation that we've heard tonight and what you see happening in our schools is already in line with this application. We just have to fine-tune it with the military emphasis and identify those points of contact. So, Mr. Chair, Superintendent, that's where we are for tonight, if, with your approval, we'll get started on it as soon as possible.
So we have a motion to move forward to the NC Purple Star Initiative.
I'll second.
Ms. Bothwell had the motion, Mr. Woody had the second. Any more discussion?
I wanted to hear from a couple of the girls about this, because you talked about this. Do you want to say something? Because you've been affected by this, right?
Yes, definitely. Um, as a military child, I think that it's amazing to implement it here. It's interesting, because I've lived in a lot of different places where everyone's super used to the people coming in and out, like on military bases, but as a small town, I think it's even more important to really emphasize military child support, because fewer people are used to people coming in and out, so I think it's a great thing to start here.
Thank you. How many, how many times have you moved?
Um, I think it's seven.
I think she should be on the committee.
Already done.
You bring a lot of value.
Maybe I can convince her, her father too.
Yeah. You bring a lot, you don't, and, you know, it's funny, you, you don't realize, so I, I, when I teach people things in the nail world, they're like, oh, I don't know, I don't know. I said, you don't know until someone asks you, and then you'll be surprised what you know. And you know a lot, as, at your young age, you have a wealth of information in your brain just because of what you've experienced, so, thank you. But, yeah.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes, which was good. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Allen. Next, we'll hear from Mr. Ian Adams, Director of Facilities, in regards to a grant from NC Green Power.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Board, Ms. Bassnight, Oliver, there are Navy veterans here. Uh, this is just to piggyback off of a solar project that the board already signed off on. NC Green Power called me a couple months ago with a bit more available funding to add two more schools to our solar program. The two schools being added are Manio High School and Cape Patterson Elementary, you know, as a grant for a 20-kilowatt solar system. A typical house runs on about 30 kilowatts per day, so we're saving a household electrical bill every day. But we recommend that the board approves a signature, the contract for the final two, two schools to be added to the solar program.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that a motion.
We have a motion to accept the grant from NC Green Power to install solar panels at Manio High School, Cape Patterson Elementary School, as requested. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ballance, any discussion? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the last item under new business, I'll turn the meeting over to Board Attorney Rachel Hitch to review the first reading of additional policy manual updates.
Yes, all of these additional, um, policy manual updates are related to amendments proposed by the School Board Association, and we've been through them, and this is your first reading, so you don't have to adopt them this evening, it's just for first reading.
Thank you, Ms. Hitch.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And this concludes our business portion of the meeting. I'd like to now open the floor for comments from the board and our student advisors. We'll start with student advisors first tonight. Any comments, guys?
Um, I just want to, uh, I went to the senior career, or was it? I can't really remember. Yeah, for the previous, my, that whole week, too. Um, I think it was Tuesday, or last, two weeks ago. Um, I, I had so much fun, I was there from, I believe, eight to two. Um, just seeing all the kids run around and like, see all the car, all the trucks, like, really, like, my brother came home, he disappeared, and he, all, that's all he talks about, he died. He said it was really cool, and all, all his friends, that I was really cool, and I think that's something that I hope we keep doing yearly, because it is really, a really good experience. And, um, congratulations to First Flight High School and Soccer Team. I just want to especially emphasize the soccer team. I am and the entire community, we are all so proud of them, and that team this year was special, like, it wasn't just normal sports team, they're all such amazing students, such amazing people and athletes, and they represent the school so well, on and off the field, and I'm glad that if any team could want to see, it was them. They are amazing. Um, I also want to shout out the community who, last week, we went to Glenn Boxton's house and decorated their house for Christmas, you should have your time right now, uh, the man alive to the Boxtons. And I also want to say, good luck, there's cancer is coming up, and 80% of those funds, like you said, are going to Miss Rebeford and Glenn, so I'm excited to see the community at that event.
Thank you. Mr. Bassnight? Mr. Boxton? Mr. Twitty?
Chair, I, I got to piggyback on Ms. Tench, what she was saying about First Flight High School Soccer Team, it's been an amazing year for them, I'm so excited and proud of them. Went out, watched a couple games, and you can tell they're really, really into it. One of the games, I, I was about to freeze, and they were out there in shorts, I know they were running, but my gosh, it was, that wind was blowing, the Wright brothers knew where they, where they needed to be to fly that plane, I assure you that. But a lot of good things going on in Dare County schools, I'm, I'm proud to be part of it, and I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and enjoy your family and have a good time.
Ms. Ballance?
I'm gonna be short and sweet and just say, I hope everybody has a restful holiday weekend and gets a chance to spend time with family and eat good.
I'm excited about the, uh, Purple Star Award, because Ian and I, I guess, must be the only Navy veterans in the building tonight, but anyway, that's, that's something exciting, you're in Marine Corps. That's all I have.
Yeah, I want to piggyback on what most everybody said, kudos to First Flight, um, soccer, the cancer tournament. If you like basketball, you're going to see some of the best high school basketball players, literally on the East Coast, uh, it's, it's, it's a great time. And I want to thank Mr. Bassnight and everybody for the great stuff that's going on within our school district, it's, it's, it's fun to watch and be a part of also, and I wish everybody happy Thanksgiving.
Ms. Bothwell?
Yeah, um, I'm so proud to be working with all of you, you're just fabulous. Everything we do for these kids is just, piggybacks, 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 it's really special. And I don't know if everybody got to go see the wall that heals, but, huh, that was awesome. They did a super job on that, and I'm really proud that Dare County was able to have it here, so. And happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Mr. Woody?
Everybody have a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Mr. Brower?
I'd also like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Just looking at the calendar, next month actually marks our first anniversary as a board with, uh, Superintendent Bassnight. And a cool thing about, uh, you know, anniversaries is they do give you the time to reflect. And just looking over the course of the previous year, I'm very pleased with the path that the schools are on, and I think the culture is changing, it's coming from the top down, and you can certainly see it if you spend any time in the schools. We've been able to work, uh, move forward as, with a consensus on most issues, uh, which is surprising, it's, 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 it's good. And Mr. Bassnight and Chairman Payne, I think, have done a wonderful job prioritizing our needs in this district and, uh, putting our schools back on track. There's still a lot of work to do, and I know that Steve will tell you that, I know Ron will tell you that as well, but we are on the right path, and I'm very optimistic for the upcoming year and where we're going.
Thank you, Mr. Brower, yes, thank you. I'd like to thank everybody for joining us this evening. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Have a motion by Mr. Twitty, is there a second? Second by Ms. Bothwell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, we're now adjourned. Great Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving.
I know.